If everybody could take a seat. Date is June tenth, 2013. We're going to try to avoid the weekends.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Larry.
Here.
Aaron.
Here.
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 The minutes were in our package of the May thirteenth meeting, 2013, that are in correction, positions, deletions. If that is their motion approved. Second. The motion made, second is by trustee Kors. On our favor. Aye.
I did it for pity.
I'll give that one to Mr. Yen. You can do the roll call.
Larry.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Proust.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Wayman.
Yes.
Close question.
Everyone has a copy of the court's report. Total tax income received since the last meeting, three hundred fifty-four thousand, seven hundred forty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. And the bulk of that is real estate taxes coming in. Attached to the court's report is a proclamation in a letter from the Will Burundi Center for Endangered Living. They're asking that we approve the proclamation declared July twenty-first through twenty-eighth as Accessibility Awareness Week in the middle of the future. Are there any questions or objections to that? And also, I need to know who we want to get together, who's going to ride on the Fourth of July parade so I can order candy and what we need for the cars.
I'll ride. It's a pleasure. Walk is not in this paragraph.
Do you want to walk or ride?
Walk is not in the paragraph. Yeah.
You can't have candy if you're not riding.
Okay. What's the pleasure?
That's why we always walk.
I hope it's not a hundred degrees like last year. I'll walk.
Then if you guys want to ride, just come.
He's just did a lot of water job.
Last sticky asphalt.
I'll walk.
I'll walk.
Friend will be the parade fellow.
I'm planning on it as well.
I'll drive. I don't want to.
You especially walk. Is there any kind of parade detail?
All right, I'll go.
And you ride?
I don't know. I'm supposed to be in the parade somewhere.
Take a queen of the prom.
Oh, that's right.
They got to ride in the parade.
Do we need to buy the vehicle?
The white one.
You mean for the?
For the trustees. He had always gotten vehicles the last few years.
Yeah, it drove it, yeah.
Like what they want, someone else driving that vehicle.
Why don't we just use the his raffle car?
You know. You're not going to be able to get out.
No, as long as it's a trustee, I don't care.
If not, just let us know.
Yeah.
Go as the village president because he wants to ride.
Yeah, get a golf cart. Takes care of this problem.
We can get a golf cart with a little.
Well, how many are riding if everybody's walking?
Well, if someone's going to have to drive the vehicle to carry all like you. So that's probably going to be the president. And then, well, Gail, you're using. So it'll be three trustees riding behind. So we need to make sure he's got the break in.
I mean, or at the very least, like you said, maybe we can do a golf cart or something. Just worry about getting out of the car.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to work.
Or something.
Yeah, you got a plan for that.
What's going on? That's it.
Well, I worked the parade.
That's mine for the fourth.
No, no, not. Bill is right, the truck you want that though.
What am I going to?
And we do great registration.
Well, once you get them all registered, it's literally part of the ride of the parade.
Constantly you're running back and forth, taking stuff to the judges.
I have to jack this out and start the parade, then I got to go with the judges. Do you stay in for a lineup?
That's amazing. Well, we'll get a good pick. If I have my hands for walking.
Maybe one to take in a new pick.
And just.
What?
Just as a note.
I'll give you the bag.
Maybe if you're going to be walking or.
Leave your room there for a bucket.
That you're also the king of something like that.
I agree, yeah. Just we'll work out the key.
We'll figure it out. That's all.
I have a question on that proclamation. Should there be a motion?
No. Not necessary for a proclamation. Do you ever just authorize to say objections?
Representation of audience, if there anyone from the audience that wishes to address the board. If not, step up, state your name and address, and state your cause. If there was from the audience that wishes to address the board, I have one thing that I think I'll bring up now before I forget to do it. We received a call from a resident about low-flying aircraft, and this was, I believe, in the middle of the night. There's concern that the plane was coming out of one of the closest airfields along airfields that is very close to us. Not sure, I know I didn't hear it, I don't know if anybody else did. But a couple thoughts on that is number one, the only low-flying aircraft that I'm aware of that I've actually seen myself is from Rattus. But if in fact something like that occurs, just a tail number helps. You can call the tail number into FAA, make a complaint, and then, I don't know, if your complaint may be heard, you can go from there. Also, there is a general phone number for both fields, since that's the closest airfield. Possibly if you call that number, maybe they'll have an answer for it. I'm not sure what they'll do if you call it three o'clock in the morning, but that's another resource possibly available to the residents if in fact they have that. And then always if it's a suspicious flying, well, it's a lawyer aircraft, I'm sure the police would be more than happy to take the call and take a look at it and go from there. Perfect.
Yeah, was that in the evening? Because one morning, Tuesday morning, there was a one flying real low flight in the Gulf.
Daytime or night?
Daytime, like eight in the morning.
I don't know, you know, there's a possibility with the situation at the Gulf or somewhere, or somebody was taking over it.
That's what I thought. It was flying very low.
There's been a lot of helicopters flying back and.
Well, this was.
That was going for a lot.
This was an airplane. It was not a shot.
Another low-flying aircraft is when they're checking the pipeline and also the high tension wires.
But like I say, if any resident has a doubt about what that plane is doing, if they feel suspicious or threatened by it, they obviously can call the police and they can take a look at it, maybe get a tail number, they can call it, those are the options, go from there. Reports to Village Commissions, Communication Commission. I'll make their report. I know they've been busy planting flowers, if you go around town, those flowers have been planted everywhere. They look very nice. I'll also mention that the baskets are out. They're looking pretty good, they're growing as fast as possible they can, I guess. And add on that, if there was. Fourth of July commission, Mark, you forward the man?
Yeah, the bands are all in place. Our crew is busy getting the park called straightened up, doing a lot of things and redecorating. And the Fourth of July car is being shown on display on several areas. Tickets are going affordable on this car. Other than that, we've got a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night and just kind of to tie up the newsstands.
Any questions?
We recently had a talent show that was, went very well. We had, it was about, right around twenty, right around twenty acts. Kids really enjoyed it. It was, weather kind of played havoc. We were lucky, we had the community hall set up in case of rain. It was upstairs, it was packed. I mean, it was all the level up there. Went really well. And then, so Saturday, June twenty-second, we have Beechers Amazing Race that we're doing. Which should be a good one, we've gotten a lot of really good responses from businesses that are going to be participating. I think we're somewhere in the fifteen to twenty businesses that are wanting to participate in this. And then Friday, June twenty-eighth, we have our water park trip. That should do it.
Cancer Awareness Commission, sir.
Yes, at the last meeting, we talked about changing the ordinance, the name of the ordinance or the name of the commission. And what we wanted to do is get cancer memorial out of there and put Ribbon of Hope Committee. So that's what we have done, and it's enclosed for your review. And I'd like to make a motion to accept this name change ordinance, following up with the last one. Have we, have we approved?
Of the ordinance number eleven eighty-nine, the motion of the board, oh, second. Roll call.
Just out of, for the public, any questions or comments or discussion?
Sir? You're the only one with any questions, are you?
I don't have.
I just want to make sure. Is there anybody else that had any questions or comments?
Wayman.
Yes.
Yes.
Proust.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Yes.
We have our next meeting coming up Thursday. That ends that report.
I just made a comment, I've had a chance to visit. A lot of the work that was being done by the commissions, Youth Commission, Communication Commission, Fourth of July, Cancer Awareness and so on and so forth. And I applaud the work that you're doing and we really appreciate all that you do on behalf of the Village Board. And I encourage anyone that, when they have an event coming up or if they have plantings or whatever, first of all, I'm sure they'd appreciate the help or at least stop by and just to say hi and see what they're doing, how they do it, and so on and so forth. Finance and administration.
Last official report. Probably where that after the day, Kim and I switch roles, treasure recovery treaty. And during June, we're beginning the commission number twenty independent and signature card, signature cards set in place. And then Kim will give the treasure report in July, and then sometime later in July, I'll fade away. It's a game plan. So we have a couple makes of signature cards, we have to report them to the bank to make all that happen. I have enjoyed it, twelve years or so. The treasures report. We looked at that first page. The significant changes, the MFT dropped substantially. We paid off the hundred seventy thousand dollar MFT loan. Most of the money came out of the MFT. The rest of it came out of infrastructure. So if you'll notice, down the infrastructure, I dropped drastically. I think seventy-seven thousand came out of the infrastructure, ninety-five thousand came out of MFT. They weren't a sure debt. There was a hundred and twelve thousand dollar loan payment, the sewer plant that came out of that account. And if you notice the plus side in general, we did get two tax distributions. One about two hundred fifty thousand, the other about forty thousand. So that's why that jumped up. One thing I'd like to point out, if you notice the totals, we paid off the hundred seventy thousand dollar loan, you know, of T. And we still have more money than we had last month, seventy thousand. And even more significant, they were a couple hundred thousand dollars over there last year after paying out the hundred seventy thousand dollar loan. And on top of that, we financed the seven hundred thousand dollars, which is going to save the village a hundred thousand dollars over the course of ten years. So you really have to commend yourself for handling the finances of the village. You have to be really proud of where you are financially. I'm sure other communities are not in the same position, but you've done a great job with them. And the commission accounts, if you notice the very last one, the fireman park lights, we started an account to accumulate money to replace the lights in the fireman park. A thousand dollars of that came from donation and four cents came from interest. Any, interest is allocated right about this time of the year, the last two years. And there's one plus to paying off the loans, you know. You certainly might need much on your money. Any question about this page? The other three pages are the bills that took care of paying. They're all pretty spontaneous. You notice, this is three hundred sixty thousand dollars. But of that, hundred seventy thousand came out for the MFT loan I mentioned today that we paid off. And hundred twelve thousand for the sewer plant loan. So that's, you know, two hundred eighty thousand, that three sixty.
Any questions?
One question, I thought. And you indicated this earlier that we're going to have the commission start taking over Thursday. We haven't had them signing the cards yet, though we're going to start it this season.
I think the game plan was to, the mayor asked for them to turn in the list of participants in the commission for tonight's meeting, I believe. And then, after that, we need to find out who's going to be their treasurer.
Okay.
And then, once we have that information, then we can do the signature cards. So it is going to take probably a couple of weeks, at least, to personally get the commission members and then find out who's going to be the check slayer. One of them will be one of you, whoever's, if I review what was passed some time ago. The trustee that's on that commission must be one of the signers of the checks. And then the other person can be the commission treasurer or whoever's made the decision. But we're still a couple steps away from that.
It's my understanding, is that?
Yes.
Anything else?
We do have a handful on the go.
And we asked the outgoing treasurer to attend the July fifteenth meeting.
Say it again?
You'll be here for the July?
Oh, yeah, I'll be here.
You'll be here.
You're doing a great job. We should be allowed a lot of late hours. I think we're up. Sorry, like kind of fun or something?
That was Friday.
Friday and Friday night? I don't know.
That was still the problem.
Better witness.
My.
What was it, Thursday? It was Thursday.
I have both share two late nights this week. We're getting there. You're doing a good job.
And I want to applaud Nelson for his work the last four years. I think he's one of the easiest cocks in the field that we take the brand. I mean, if we negotiate those loans or things, we get all that taken care of, that's not an easy task to go through all.
So that's a joy. And I agree. Thank you. But here, sure. Don't be a straight here, though.
I really have enjoyed it. Very good. It's great. I've changed my way to put it. It's great. And it's good. Financially, you're really, you're in good shape. You don't have what I call fun money, money for the projects and stuff. With day to day, you're, you're safe.
Thank you. And also, thank you for stepping up to play and take this place on. Appreciate it. With that being said, I make a motion approving the treasures report for the month of May. One second. Motion for a second. Any questions? Roll call.
Larry.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Yes.
Wayman.
Yes.
Treasures report are the various reports are also in our package from the preceding month. Bills were also sent to us and for us, there's some additional items that Bob's added. They are shown in bold.
I got to say, ninety-five thousand in bills includes twenty-four thousand for a squad, nine thousand for the award. If you take those two out, the bills are about seven eighty, sixty-five. And there's no surprise.
I noticed that the ammunition's been finally paid. Is that, Jeff, is that just for the first installment payment or?
That was for that order.
Okay.
We were, I believe that one was twenty boxes.
We had one bill in there to summon up the emergency repair on Indiana Avenue, leak detection. Group found a leak there, and we were told that the counties that are paid in forty-eight hours, so put he had to come out and get that leak fixed quick, so we had to pay in desperation.
Any questions? I make a motion approving the bills in a total of ninety-five thousand, two dollars and eighty-five cents. Second. The motion made, the second. Other questions? If not, roll call.
Wayman.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Proust.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes. And as Nelson indicated, we've gone through closing for the two thousand two water tank loan. Our rate has gone from five and a quarter to two and a half, which will save the village twenty thousand each year. The expectation is that the loan will be paid off by twenty-three thousand, or two thousand twenty-three. Anything else you want to add to that, Nelson?
No. I've been happy with three, two and a half, it's really good.
The auditor is going to start their work going after our books for the fiscal year two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, starting June twenty-fifth. Welcome to hell. Bob has all the fun that you can deal with him doing.
Leaving the water industry too.
The next one, the Village Treasurers Annual Report is being compiled and will be published in the Beecher Herald, probably the first week of July. Is that possible, Nelson?
We've got Bob working on it there.
The next item in front of us is also concerning, of course, funds, but it's the liability insurance cooperative. We've removed ourselves from the L O M Municipal Insurance Cooperative because the costs have gone up. We're trying to, of course, control the costs in front of us financially. We're trying to get into a lower risk and self-fund ourselves so that we stop getting hammered with these excessive costs by going ahead.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's a change. We left a pool, we go out on our own. But now, going back into a pool, this pool is different in that we're going to not self-fund the entire amount like animal was. We're going to buy a high deductible policy, and we're going to cover it into a twenty-five percent claim. And they're picking the cream of the communities in the state who saw the names most times that they've been basically parroted for this pool. Since we're a founding member, we will be on the board of the rest of the pool. And I don't see a reason why we wouldn't cut our rates another ten to twenty percent. So if we're looking for a motion tonight, Mr. Chairman, we are not approving this, we're expressing an interest in joining, because they need that before Gallagher Bassett spends a lot of money. Wouldn't be prostitution if I was to give.
I make a motion expressing an interest in the formation of a liability insurance corporation called the Illinois Municipal Insurance Cooperative.
Second.
The motion made, we're second. Any questions or discussion? Sit down, roll call.
Larry.
Yes.
Aaron's, yes. Proust.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Wayman.
Yes.
Just more of an awareness. Every year we go through this prevailing wage, this is now for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. It's an annual item we do every year. It's kind of just a matter of business in the state of Illinois. So I make a motion for ordinance number? Eleven ninety. Eleven ninety, adapting prevailing wage for the fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any questions? Roll call.
Wayman.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Proust.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Yes. Bob, did you want me to jump down to the other, to the next area? Go to the next sheet, under Public Safety Community, that's Michael. Item number five is concerning the transfer of eighty thousand dollars from General to Infrastructure to pay for the road resurfacing program. Bob has a memo enclosed. We'll be paying the bills from the infrastructure later in the meeting. So I make a motion authorizing the transfer of eighty thousand dollars from the General to Infrastructure to pay for the two thousand thirteen road resurfacing program. Second. The motion made, we're second. Any questions? Roll call.
Larry.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Proust.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Wayman.
Yes.
Your report? Thank you. Public Safety Committee.
Yeah, Public, I mean, Police Department muscle report, the name is included, goes for your review. Update on new police cruiser and sale home vehicles. Chief, you want to bring us up to date on that?
The new police cruiser is up at Minor Electronics getting outfitted, so we should have it sometime this week. There is a concern that one of the lights may be on back order. If that was the case, they're just going to hook me up with something temporarily till the light bar comes in. The vehicles we have for sale is one, a ninety-six Caprice, that's the old squad car, the old green one. We have a two thousand and three Ford Crown Vic, and then one of the vehicles we seized, a two thousand Mitsubishi, no Mazda six-two-six. I sent a spec sheet to Jeanette with the general information. I've also given her pictures. We're going to run an ad, take sealed bids. If the bids are too low, we can reject them, but generally, we get some good bidding. I've notified Chicago Motors up in Chicago, and historically, each year, they submit good bids for the cars. That's the status on that, unless anyone has any questions on that.
The two police cars go into General, but Mitsubishi wasn't answered for a question.
I'd switch it because the two police cars are worth more than the Mazda.
Oh, or Mazda.
Yeah. But yeah, the squad cars echoes into General.
Excuse me, chief, is there a timeline on, better than on these vehicles?
There will be, we just, we haven't advertised it yet. But it'll probably be, I don't know, thirty days as soon as we can get it in the paper. Just going to run a classified ad. I mean, it's the cheapest way to go, and they're not real expensive cars. So we're trying to minimize our cost. And if anybody wants, I can email you the specs and the pictures of them. You can look at them.
School security and safety update, chief?
The, let's see, the end of May, Lieutenant Emerson and Andy Leroy completed the school audit. They also held a tabletop with the teachers discussing the security in the school. We also met last week. We had, the school is required annually to meet with the police department, village hall, and also fire department to discuss safety. And that meeting, it lasted about an hour and a half, almost two hours. A lot of good dialogue, a lot of good conversation and improvements to be coming.
Okay. Mosquito maintenance program update, what do you?
Sure. The larva sighting has been done, and I will begin spraying for mosquitoes Thursday night. The only thing I want to say is it's dusk, you know, probably around eight-thirty, I'll be starting, hopefully finishing up right around midnight. You know, and that's pretty much the rule, standard of thumb. If there are any questions, you can, they can call the public works line, nine four six, three six three six, and I'll be glad to get back to them. We did have information in a newsletter explaining exactly what the chemicals were. They're non-toxic to humans, animals. We don't do aquatic spraying. They do say if you have asthma or anything, you shouldn't let your kid ride behind a fogger or on their bike, you know, it's just common sense. If they find out they're irritable, you know, shut the windows. And it doesn't last that long, you know, at least the spray part of the fogging. No, we're not, that's pretty much in a nutshell.
How many bricassos were, did you put out?
There was probably around eighteen hundred and something.
Oh, eighteen hundred structures were treated?
That's correct.
And then that stuff goes into ponds from?
Yeah, you go, we're ponds in a crib.
Oh, you're going to do this every other week, or what's your frequency?
Once a week.
What do you think?
I try to do it every Thursday, just to, you know, stay up on it unless, you know, there's inclement weather, and then I, you know, kick it back probably till Friday. If during around the Fourth of July, usually we do it a couple nights in a row right there for the obvious reasons, if there's, you know, festival. Or depending, if it gets to be really, really bad, where we get some major complaints or not staying up on it, I, you know, I could even do probably two sprays in a week. But right now, it's just once a week.
Also, a week or so ago, we had the annual bicycle rodeo at the Frams Park on a Saturday morning. Good weather, and I think we had thirty-eight students that participated in the tests that were given. There were ten, ten items, ten scoring items in which they all participated and were great and a hundred. Seemed like everybody was having a good time, the weather was good, and a couple bikes were given away. Chief, how do you think they had to that or?
Yeah, we had, yeah, there was a total of thirty-seven participating, four age groups. I had a first place through fourth place ribbon award in each age group. There was a lot of tough competition because there was a lot of ties for first and second, because the scoring is based on a numeric system. The boys' bike was won by Jack Hayhurst, and the girls' bike was won by Whitney Traco. And those were the big items that were given away. And we haven't completed logistics yet, but those bikes, even though we paid for them, we're gonna be reimbursed. They're gonna be donated by a couple of the businesses.
Any questions, or the chief, or myself?
This one, Mr. Chairman, actor Tammy Raskin wishes to address the building board, heir to High Fifteenth. About school safety and security.
Great.
She wishes to brief the board on what's going on.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anything else?
The only other thing I have is I'm continually working on the sound system. Like I said last time, this room is not acoustic friendly. When the air handlers are on, the sound is gonna be diminished. It's not gonna be as good. I've done some research on what's called a shotgun microphone. You've probably seen them. It's a long, skinny microphone. It looks like a pole. They are better for distance, which means I can probably get the sound farther away. That's one option. The other option is to get new microphones here and put our wireless microphone at the podium. And anybody who addresses the board would have to go to the podium in order to be recorded. And there are just a couple options. Getting the new microphones, we all are tentatively, it's already about fifteen thousand, was that estimate? Somewhere around there. I think the way to go, we'll try that shotgun mic first. It's right around a hundred dollars for it. But we'll check then.
Does that cost share or is it ours or township and ours? We don't know.
We can ask them if they're, if they're gonna use it. I don't know if they're using the equipment.
I think what he's saying is that they're not sure, he's not one hundred percent sure if they're using our equipment or if they have their own equipment tied into it.
Right.
So we'd have to investigate. But Jeff, are you getting these into that or not?
Pardon?
The speakers above us, you're not getting these into that recording?
I'm not plugged into it because the only sound we get is from those microphones, so like me talking out here, you won't hear me. Right now, it's, it's going off the camera mic. So it, it picks up more, it hears more, but with the air handlers going, it's just the background noise kinds of drowns it out.
Just real quick, about two months ago, the township was talking about getting some bids on sound system and talking to guys about splitting the cost. I don't know if they've done it or if they changed or everything, but they were looking at doing that because they were not happy with their sound system.
Chief, just a point, I stopped by the water. He didn't know I stopped by the micro, that they, I think everybody that participated and did his job, I think Justin Global was the judge. I think I was the judge, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing else?
No.
Street and Allen, he's gonna ask John to do their report.
Twenty thirteen road resurfacing program update. All work should have been completed. I think we're still waiting on a few things, aren't we, Bud? The sod?
Yes, we are. In fact, any-
The weather hasn't been very cooperative with the rain.
Well, we, it's been kinda tough to get dried black dirt because of all the rain. And yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because we've gotten a lot of calls in wondering when or telling us that, you know, the restoration's haven't been done. And they need to know that it's not that it's, it's been neglected, it's just a work in progress.
Yeah.
So, and we have not-
The thorns is in, the shoulders are stoned.
We haven't forgot about it at all.
One question, it's going to be hydro seed. Hydro seed?
Yeah.
The, someone said that the engineer recommended we not put sod down.
I was gonna say, the original bids and everything, everything was called for sod.
Well, there's two rules of thumb, you know, Bob. If you put the sod down, you really have to, you know, water it religiously, you know, until it really takes, and, and we're not capable of doing that, and I don't see the people going out there and doing it. So the, you know, the hydro seed, it's, it's just a matter of throwing it down, wetting it down. If we have to, we go back and throw the seed on the top of it, which we will probably have to do, but it, it will take it better, you know, especially the distance we're looking at.
Yeah, because everything called for sod.
That was a, there was a field change made by recommendation the engineer. Was it when you were chairman?
Yeah.
We worked all the card, I think, with it.
We had a discussion. That was the one day you couldn't make a number over the pros and cons of each. And basically, we decided this was the best route to go, and we should get, there is a credit, definitely a credit due, and it says there should be a rest. Consider a motion authorizing payment to H R Green in the amount of ten thousand seventy-two dollars fourteen cents from the infrastructure account for phase-three engineering for the two thousand thirteen road program. I'll go ahead and make a motion authorizing payment to H R Green in the amount of ten thousand seventy-two dollars fourteen cents from the infrastructure account for phase-three engineering of the two thousand thirteen road program.
Second. Motion made and we're second. Any questions? Get that, roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clear?
Consider a payment in the amount of one hundred sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and thirty cents to Arcoi Paying for eighty percent payment on the two thousand thirteen road resurfacing program. There's an invoice and a breakdown that does not include the landscaping portion or ten percent retention on the project. So make a motion authorizing payment in the amount of one hundred sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and thirty cents to Arcoi Paying for eighty percent payment on the two thousand thirteen road resurfacing program.
Second. Is a motion made and seconded. Any questions?
How far along are we on the project?
It's done.
Just landscaping.
Yeah. The, yeah, probably ten percent retention on the project that we hold. And then, yeah.
It's getting the dirt.
Just the dirt for the landscaping, for the hydro seed. Other than that, shoulders are stoned. Yep, it's all done.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Clearing.
Yes.
Karen's yes. Bruce?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes. Consider a payment in the amount of seventy-six thousand thirty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents from the MGM escrow account for repairs to the Cardinal Creek Boulevard Bridge. This is also less ten percent retention. So I will make a motion authorizing payment in the amount of seventy-six thousand thirty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents from the MGM escrow account for repairs to the Cardinal Creek Boulevard Bridge.
Second. There's a motion on the floor and a second. Any questions?
Yeah. Is that also for landscaping? I think you got the landscaping down. Wow, if there's some soil work that has to be done here yet, I can't. Line the curbs. Cardinal Creek?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think there's some black.
Up on the, on the bridge area, that has to be done. We did a couple of things warming up, but other than that.
Do you wanna make a chance for landscaping? No, it includes that.
No, 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 John only stopped at retention.
Oh, that was just description. I was just saying that, that, that was just discussion. That wasn't part of the motion.
Okay.
Five line, is there a percent?
Being retained for.
Yes, and there's more. Ten percent plus unfinished.
Motion made and seconded. Any other questions? Roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clear?
Yes. Danners and flags are up for the season, so the flower baskets. And comment annual report for two thousand twelve is also closed for review. And that includes streets and alleys. Sewer and water. Sewer and water. Water Department Monthly Report is enclosed for review. A lot of Sewer Department Monthly Report. Maxwell Street Water Main Project update, all the restoration and everything.
All right, you know as well as I, I have a concern over there. I talked to our resident engineer. I will be calling Simpson to come back and locate that little area there because I think there's still a possible leak. It's either one, it's either it's leaking at the B box or they never really fixed that hydrant properly, or, you know, there's a chance that the ditch line where all the water now all is, you know, concentrated, and it's sitting there and has to dissipate. I think there's a little too much water there. I brought you over there.
Yeah.
For it just to be sitting there. And my, I, I believe there's probably a small leak that they're gonna have to fix. And when that happens, we'll also have to, it probably got three hundred bucks for Simpson to come out. So we might, you know, there's a chance we might eat it. I'm doubting that.
We also have to get the piles.
And he told, when, when I had Mike on the phone today, they're aware of that. He says he believes that because of all the rain and the mud that's out there, is one of the reasons why they haven't pushed it back, but they are aware of it.
Yeah. And just one more, but there, there was some questions about some of the other restoration work. That's all been taken care of.
Everything that I'm aware of.
Rest of the punch list was taken care of after the leak detection, which is in here, the next item. There was an issue with the hydrant there. Well, that was addressed, but now, after walking with you, buddy, it really seems like, I mean, it's a straight line where, like you said, I, if I I guess man, I would say it's, it's the B box or the service line.
You know what, they're gonna-
To the B box.
The beauty of where it's at is the hydrant's right there, the B box is right there. They can triangulate. If it's leaking anywhere, they'll find it, they'll probably hit it right on, on the nose. It could be just the compression fitting from there where they tapped into the main, which is what I'm thinking, but, you know, I'm not clear of one.
Leak detection report update, that's enclosed in the packet. As it stated last month, there was, like, it was seven on this list. In the bills, we saw the one that was taken care of right away. That was the one right at Indiana Avenue with the, a county doing their, their road work on Indiana to take care of that, so there's no restoration cost. It was ideal to take care of that and just have that subbed out. Other than that, what do you wanna give us an update on the rest of them? We know five, on that list there, you got the five twenty-nine Maxwell that's been actually addressed.
I have three other ones to address, and I, you know, weather permitting, you know, I said one of them, I'm gonna hydro excavate, actually, two of them. So that means they're gonna rent a vacuum truck and bring it in. They're not because they're trying to be fancy, but there's just a gas main comment, service line, and, and going in and ripping it out would be a massive restoration and a major cost to us. We'd have to hand dig it anyway. The other one that's on Pasadena, that should be an easy fix. So I would think that within the next couple of weeks here, hopefully the week before, I don't wanna cut my throat here. We should be down to at least one. Everything else, all the hydrants that were questionable leaking, you know, we've, we've addressed those.
And the one that you're thinking of would be left would be the smallest one, correct?
Yes.
Church Road.
Yeah.
One at Beatty?
Well-
Church Road. Beatty's actually-
I managed to, I managed to somehow get over the fence over there, believe it or not.
You were able to get over the fence?
Oh, yeah, surprised.
Used the bucket truck.
Yeah.
Boomed himself over.
All right, spring hydrant flushing program.
Okay, um, the way this worked was we, you know, I had valve turning scheduled and placed a leak detection, but the village board, we decided to do leak detection first, so it kinda put us behind the eight balls for our scheduling. I would like to do our, our flushing, valve turning, and then do the flushing. I'm not sure that that's gonna happen. And he's supposed to get back to me within this week here. If I can get it done, the valve turning within the next week, flushing will also happen. If not, I'm gonna go ahead and do the spring flush, and then we'll wait till the fall to do the valve turning and cleaning other boxes.
You wanna coincide, basically what you're saying is you wanna coincide.
Yes, I do. I wanna, yeah, because anything that breaks loose to it, I wanna be able to pull it, purge it, get it out of there, and never look back.
All right, status on the new mini doll?
Still working on that.
Skater upgrade?
I will have to, I'm going to meet with the water and the administrator because there's a couple issues that, and I'm not sure which direction we want to go with the upgrade. I can tell you this, I have questions about our communications, just like you did with Eastcom. Our skater system runs off of, you know, a radio system that's military technology. It's fourteen years old now, Bob. They narrow-banded it, everything, you know, all the police radios and everybody. My bandwidth is still wide, and I found out that I'm getting stomped on a little bit, and it's causing a communication issue every once in a while, and the results aren't too good. So we gotta decide if we can financially, you know, make that upgrade this year.
At all of the locations?
Yes. Every single one of them. There's a central down at the sewer plant.
Right.
And they all talk to it, so that's-
The, the three wells?
Yeah, you got your, you got your three wells, every lift station that you have, everything, they, they all talk together, every, every place.
They have radios, but the radios are too old, I mean, narrow-banded. So when they realize frequencies, we're getting bleed over from other people that are using the frequencies, it's kicking the skater. So we're gonna have to probably.
Oh, we're gonna, it's gonna have to be done. I, yeah, the best example I can give you is well four, where we have everybody's radio anyway, and if it messes up when it's, the tower is filling up, and then it knocks it out, and then it forgets to give the command or it prevents it from talking, the tower will overflow. And, you know, our response time is pretty great with that, but it, it's something that doesn't need to have, you know, doesn't need to have.
There's not a high-level controller sitting there telling the pump to turn on?
There is not, there, there's a couple ways that that works. When that system goes knocks out, it runs off of water pressure. The problem is talking to the other wells, like-
Oh, okay.
Well three will not get the command to shut down, is what it is, or well five.
If they're filling.
That's correct.
Have you gotten the cost of replacing to the narrow b?
I'll get back to you on that.
It's worth the money, but you.
Yeah.
So he's maybe deciding what other project we're gonna defer. He thinks this is important.
Well, this is huge.
Yeah, or this is, we may have to find the money if this is something we need. Has John got something else we're gonna talk about that's not what you need today?
Consider a resolution supporting the Village of Piattone's opposition to Aqua Illinois application for extending water main from Mantino to University Park. The Village of Piattone, through its president, has requested our assistance supporting their opposition to the extension, which basically surrounds their entire village with a new private utility water service area. I, I agree. I think it's important that we support this. I don't think we wanna have any of these headaches like Piattone's having if they do decide to loop it, to head back towards Grant Park. So I'm gonna make a motion in support, or do we got a resolution number?
Twenty thirteen dash one.
I'm gonna make a motion for resolution twenty thirteen dash eleven, supporting the Village of Piattone's opposition to Aqua Illinois's application for extending a water main from Mantino to University Park.
Second. Motion made and second. Any questions?
I do. When we were going through the issues north of us, between Beecher and Creed, watershed and all of that, it was concerned by I map or C map that you needed to make sure that the water was in the shed it was coming from. Now you have a situation where water's being pumped from Mantino in the Kekke County watershed, all the way up to University Park, which is in a totally different watershed. I mean, this clearly violates C map's rules. Is there a reason why that's not in the, in the resolution? Yeah, because you cannot take water out of Lake Michigan watershed, but you can put water into. So they're, they're doing reverse of what we were talking about. They're actually adding water. But, but C map's comment when we were going through this in Chicago was that you cannot move water between watersheds. They clearly, they didn't say into or out of Chicago or into or out of Lake Michigan. It was you cannot move water into another watershed. And they never stipulated it was only going out of Lake Michigan. C map no longer has jurisdiction. Those F P As don't exist anymore.
Yeah, they're not exist.
They're not exist. Even though they gave an opinion.
Yeah.
Well, now, after that, they got away with, they did away with.
Gone.
There aren't no F P As anymore. So it's the Wild West out there as far as service there, which leads us to our next issue, but Piattone is being surrounded by private utility pipes, basically, and I don't know what they're gonna do. They're gonna block from an infrastructure point of view, and. Well, this is a total access to go after the airport. It's installed, providing all the water source to the, the airport. And it's a, it's a valid argument, but it's an argument that has no ears because those rules have changed. They have changed. That's all I have.
Other questions or comments? Roll call.
Clearing.
Yes.
Aaron's yes. Bruce?
Yes.
Coleman? Yes.
Waylon?
Yes. All right, uh, my tone. Discussion I need to update water and sewer master plans. Um, we have aspects, so a moment to provide us with, uh, a proposal to update our water and sewer master plans to include the entire Trim Creek watershed from Eagle Lake Road south to the county line. This will be a rather expensive project, but, uh, it's something that I think is, is necessary for the drafting of proper land use, um, which is intended, uh, to be completed this fall. The Indian Quarter Council has asked us for a location and sizing of sleeves under roadway for our water and sewer line extensions, um, and without these types of plans, we don't know what we need to do. We also have to find out if our proposed sewer treatment plant location, which, uh, Mayor Olin brought up, was, you know, Kentucky and-
Railroad track.
Yeah, yeah. Um, we, we need to find out if that would work. A formal proposal along with the way to finance the costs that we provided and discussed at the next meeting. Anyone have any thoughts, or?
Yeah, why are we only going up to Eagle Lake Road? Is that where the, where they start? I mean, why don't we go up to Offner Road, or Plaidon Road?
Uh, I'm gonna dig, you wanna push it?
I think you can.
Well, I mean, the, the gentleman-
The other guy's got a little problem pushing-
Right.
Towards us, you know.
The issue, the issue there is, we've always, we've always said we wanna be on top of the same piece of property, or the same area that the school goes to and the township goes to, so we're really not going any further than we would normally do. And that's why it would make sense to do that.
It's wrong, we're going to the township line, our current plan goes to the township line north. The problem is, our current plan doesn't go south of there. Our current plan does take morning to Offner Road. That's where our current plan goes, but it doesn't go as far east and west or south than we probably should be.
I, I think you just said it's a mistake.
And it's a mistake, I would Eagle Lake, but I'm pretty sure it goes on.
Yeah, I, I thought it was on there as well.
Right. 'Cause I know, we were negotiating with those farms up there, we have to take three dollars.
Well, the question then comes, is, is Trim Creek watershed all the way to Offner?
No.
See, then you've gotta remove the Trim Creek watershed, because if it's not all the way up to Offner, then it's not Trim Creek watershed.
We, we plan, we plan to, since I wrote this, I talked to engineer today, their proposals will include the entire township.
You may just wanna state it that way.
And that's beyond-
Makes it a lot cleaner.
And we're discussing this tonight, this is what you wanna do, they're willing to give you a proposal at the next meeting to consider, but we need to talk about it, not that it's in the budget at any point.
There was, there was actually some very, like, small discussion, just brought it up, and threw it out there on the table, and we started talking about, um, contracting back from woman for an engineer to, for the sewer plant operator. Um, and we were sitting there, um, we had actually kinda discussed it, we broke it out, we looked at, we looked at the watershed tables and, and everything, and it was, you know, there, there was some wheels kinda turning, you know, at that point, which was eight months ago, to a year ago.
But the reason we didn't include it in the budget is because I probably had another year to come. I had no clue we were gonna pass an airport governance legislation, that came out of left field, like a curve ball, and the B-three corridor was approved at lightning speed. In fact, when you turn the clock back, I don't think any of us thought those two things would happen within six months.
But we actually looked at it, and we actually looked at the, the watershed tables, and what would be actually the areas, and, and, I mean, just kinda quick looking at it without an actual thing, you know, proposal put together, and, the way it said we'd get back to them, so, well, here we are, we're getting back to them, but at, at that time, it was discussed to include the entire township limits.
Now, you also have, um, township only goes up to, is it, uh, Kedzie?
Of both.
Because you have there to, because you still have Crawford in the school district.
Yeah, I don't know realistically, Scott, in, in, within the next thirty years, you would provide sewer over Crawford, I don't know if that's, you're talking law.
You mean the area that the Ross is in, the whole township?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a stretch.
That's our boundary agreement, I would give you, right?
Right.
Yeah, Crawford.
Why wouldn't we go up to that?
I guess you could. The, the issue's gonna be, the issue's gonna be, you need, you're gonna need to set the boundaries that you wanna talk about. The bigger problem's gonna be, the bigger amount of real estate you start going after, you might wanna start thinking about where that number's gonna end, because you keep adding more and more on, there's additional stuff that they may have to do. I don't know what they plan on doing as part of this.
As far as, like, with the plan, so, I mean, if we're adding, uh, you know, I mean, so many, what are we talking about?
You're looking, you're looking at, you're looking at a master plan.
You're, you're talking about an open way to get into that, um, you know, we were just talking about the air, water coming from Kankakee. You know, wouldn't that be a wide open area between Beecher and Peatone?
Oh, yeah, well, that's right, where they, that's where they wanna go if they did, smarter moves, move over that way until you hit the airport. But that's why they're doing that diagonal.
Why don't we just close it up against Peatone? Instead of leaving that area open?
Honestly, if that's the case.
Peatone has a master plan that goes all the way across.
They do.
And, and Aqua Illinois just blasted right through that with their certificate of need. That's what, what Peatone's gonna use their master plan as the basis of their argument against the new expansion.
Then you need, you, you need, you need, here's the thing, then you, what you need to do is you need to go to all your border agreements.
Right.
Go from my line, county line, Offner, Crawford, it's big line.
It's gonna be a wide line.
You can do that. You're willing to spend the money necessary to do that.
Question, what's that money gonna be?
Well, the thing, the thing is, is we need to talk to them and see really what the difference is, I mean, as far as for a master plan, I mean, how much more are we talking?
Right.
Wh- when you're actually pulling the trigger, and actually, that's where your cost is gonna be, you know what I mean? But as far as the, the, the plan and stopping at Ashland versus Crawford, I can't see that being a huge difference in price.
I don't, I don't know, I know what they're gonna be giving us, John, so it's hard to put a-
Water's pretty simple, sewer needs a lot more competition. The sewer doesn't wanna build, you gotta lift it, and there's ridge lines that you gotta pass over, and I think if you hit Crawford, there's probably two ridge lines left and over, but we'll see what they say. I'll tell you the advantage of the master plan, I go back to two thousand and one, when MGM Development wanted to build, they needed a lift station to pump the sewage to the sewer plant. We made them oversize the one, the cargo pool, and this one's up here. That thing is bigger than he paid for. We did, any lift station we have in town, including the lift station, this one can handle everything, from Indiana Avenue north to Offner Road, from Dixie Highway to Hottoway, that's how big this station is. We wouldn't have gotten it if we didn't have a master plan approved that was necessary for it. I don't know if you remember, but that goes back twenty years, and our master plan, if we could save a pound check, we could prove in paper that this was a necessary approval.
Well, right now, we're looking for, the consensus that, do we really wanna think about going down this path, but I agree, we should be going to the border agreement.
We'll keep asking what the number would be, if I understand this correctly, you're throwing out a figure of twenty-five thousand dollars for the water and sewer master plan, but then add to that the land use plan, so we're talking sort of fifty-five thousand dollars, go ahead and stand corrected, more, more, because we're, we're guessing at these figures.
Right.
That's how bad this could be.
With, with everything that's going on.
We have to.
We have to.
Yes.
Well, and I agree with Bob, and you, you think about how long it took the airport to go through. And the, the discussion about the Indian Expressway for years, and then boom, it pops.
I think what just occurred, and, and it'll be part of my report, things are moving a heck of a lot faster than we ever thought, which I've already mentioned.
Yeah.
And, uh, when I get to my report, we can probably explain that and talk a lot more further, but I, I think we have no choice, we have to, and just remember that dollar figure when we get to an item, uh, planning, building, zoning report, and we have another issue that is actually a component of this.
And I, I think before we make this, we need to do the water and sewer plant. We can't zone property, for say, we wanna put commercial here, we can't get a sewer. You know, we gotta prove that we can get water and utilities to the location, we're gonna push for a zoning classification for that piece of property.
But this, these are a lot of discussions about steps beyond this. I, I think our, our first step, and, and that would be included in the sewer and water master plans, is sewer plant expansion up to-
So you wanna water and sewer plant for the schools?
I would say, yeah, I think we need to, I think we need to cover our, our boundaries.
And include the airport property. I, I'm serious, I mean, you wanna include the airport property?
I wouldn't include the airport property.
I think you would. I think you would.
I would, it's not-
If you're, if you're looking at having a legal document in hand, which you, where you wanna go, you better have that, or anything else, okay? I think you need full coverage.
So, uh, we have a consensus, let's get to Baxter Woman, let's talk about-
Either, either that, or you're gonna go and put this out for bids, and you're gonna get no better way of ending it.
And it's just flying.
And Baxter Woman, yeah, and they, they-
There's a, they're really the village's sewer and water people.
Yeah.
They've got other issues, but for sewer and water, probably that doesn't count.
Yeah, that's true, anyways, all right, I think you have a consensus, we have a consensus, so.
Well, anyone else have anything to add to that, and if not, like, who's not?
Planning, building, zoning, parks and parks.
Yeah, I think we added on to my, it's, uh, Park Direct. How, I really mean- Sorry. I don't wanna take your fifteen minutes.
Did you only come home with buildings then? We have a new mayor, and I built this agenda a long time ago to-
I didn't build it in some way.
Yeah, but we're not in the flow yet.
At least the mayor pro temp calls us.
Yes.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Uh, status of the benches in Fireman's Park, um, they are done, they are in, they are, and they look good, so, uh, buddy, thank you, um-
Is there a little plaque that goes on?
There's a plaque on there, it's been on there, committee. So, uh, looks good.
Your hand used frequently at all.
Good.
Always something to say.
That's great. Uh, update address signs, buddy?
I don't have an answer for you right today, or that, I have to check with Lloyd, so crucify me, this is-
All right, I need to get together with you too, as far as the rules on some of these parks.
Uh, that, that's a whole thing, you know, I'm, we need to talk.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna talk. Village, we talked about this, village received a price hold from Musco, lighting for new poles and lights at Fireman's One, and, uh, we already have, uh, a thousand dollars in the account.
And four cents.
And four cents.
Right.
One ninety-fifth of the way there, is what I'm thinking, so, you're gonna see, you're gonna see a push, uh, to get some donations in the near future. I think we'll have to come up with a, a committee, and, um, I know that I was assigned to be the, uh, the chairman of that committee, so, you're gonna start to see things happening as far as getting the, uh, funding for this, uh, lighting project. Hopefully, we can get some good, uh, sponsors, uh, some big corporate sponsors, and, and try to nip this right away, so that's what our, uh, thing is, and we were talking about the skater system, and, and these lights, uh, that were proposed can be controlled, uh, through the internet, and also through a smartphone, as far as, uh, I believe, turning them on or off, uh, everything else.
Are you gonna use Camp Synergy to do that kinda stuff to get on your network?
What, for the R-skater system?
Yeah.
Separated from this? No, this is, those guys, they have their own internet program, everything.
But how are they getting access to the internet?
How are they, well, they have their own transmitter, they're nationwide, these, these guys are the ones that you-
Oh, go through their system, postal system?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're the ones that, remember three years ago, Brian?
I gave you that in a number.
These guys, and-
They're very good.
And it was, um, I wanna say, like, three years ago, it was like sixty-seven thousand, well, they've, they've kinda made some really remarkable technology increases to where, um, you wouldn't even have to do it. They, they can call you up on the phone and tell you that you're having an issue, they can call you up, and, um, uh, they can shut your lights off, they can turn them on, there, there's a lot of things like that.
I'll give you an example, they give their headquarters, it's in Lee's World, North Carolina. They monitor the system all the way out, since it's under a twenty-five-year warranty, they'll send a service tech out and place a light bulb, and you can customize it, you know what I mean?
But you do realize that you don't have a boom truck go up, the lights come down to you.
That's where I don't look like that.
No, not a hundred percent, there, there's, there's different options.
Yeah. You can get them where the lights, the, the lights come down, it'll just open the house. No, the, no, John, the lights are on the canary, they literally slide down the pole.
Well, the, the, listen-
The light does not, the lights come down, uh, there's like a halo that comes all the way down with the lights on, they can change it and rip it, put them right back up. All the controls are on a horizontal box, or vertical box on the pole, it is phenomenal.
Like you're electrically raising it, just like a flag, shooting straight up the pole.
And they give you a twenty-five-year warranty on it.
The, this is the, what you're gonna see at most ball, ballparks, down, almost to like minor league ballparks, that's what they use, it's phenomenal systems.
It's not just the, uh, for the donations, it's tomorrow night, uh, the Fourth of July being, it's already being advertised, but, and we thought it was discussed last meeting, but there's, there's differences of opinions, so I intend to bring it up tomorrow night. At the very least, to start off your committee on this, is that we're hoping to put jugs throughout the park during the Fourth of July, from asking for donations, uh, to like the park, and, and the brochures that are already out there, you'll see something that says, like, the park, help us, uh, do this end, you know, think of the park, uh, we'll bring it up on the Fourth of July being tomorrow night, to make sure that we did that, the A and cross the T, and, and like I said, at the very least, we'll start out with some jugs in the park, and then we can go from there.
Okay, great. That ends my report.
If I, if I hope this is right, planning, building, it's all-
The village department, the local enforcement, Dudley reports were in close, pretty recent. Uh, the PZC, official meeting is scheduled for Thursday, two twenty-seven, this will be an organizational meeting, updates will be provided on various planning projects, which will soon be underway. Consider options for funding land use plan update. We have been contemplating a grant application with CMAP for a technical assistance grant. This will involve sending a staffer to Beecher to assist in drawing up the land use plan, concerns include how much influence CMAP would have on this process. The other, other alternative is for the village to fund a thirty thousand dollar project on its own terms, and wait for other grants opportunities to arise, which may happen, no matter which way we go, and the need to update the water and sewer master plan is the first project to undertake. Need to, anything you have to add?
Do you want us to apply for the CMAP grant or not, that was kind of me indirectly asking that question, 'cause we've been debating this one.
Basically, every day that, that the village administrator and I discuss this, uh, we changed our mind, every day that we discussed it. Uh, the concern is, and we actually did some research with other, our colleagues and so on and so forth, and they don't disagree with us, is if you apply for grant anywhere, whether it be CMAP or anyone else, how much influence would that grant or have in your planning process? And since we have had a, an issue, or a, a, whatever you wanna call it, that happened in the past with, uh, with the north, it involved CMAP, then we sort of had a case for what occurred that, not to say that that'll happen again, but we did discuss, uh, this with the authority at CMAP, I don't remember his name or his title.
Randy Moon.
Um, we did discuss it with other colleagues, and, well, uh, the gentleman that he just mentioned says, no, our, rest of our colleagues says, yeah, that might happen. So, the question becomes, is do you wanna apply for the thirty thousand dollar grant, which now lowers, lowers your master plan down to twenty-five thousand? Or do you wanna go it on our own, and make sure that we have our own?
Or hope that someone else comes up with a grant, which we may have a better idea than-
I was just gonna say, it was already a discussion at that meeting.
Yes, there is discussion, but you know, firm, here's the money, everything's tied, you're all, if you get a grant, there's some, there's ties to it, but there is the Indian money potentially there, there's talk of airport money, but none of them is certain. This one is certain. But the, the certainty comes with strings that scare me. If we get into this four-door study with, uh, all the way from I-80 down to Kankakee County line on Route One, our diff, our, we may have a difference of opinion with how they see urban planning should occur. That's what concerns me, we don't see it the way they see it up north. And if you use that, if you do that, there might be some influence, or I hope you're overreacting and saying, ah, don't worry, buddy, let's see how they move the plan. That's why Greg and I, we, mom says back and forth, and thought, well, let's, let the board discuss it and see what you guys think.
Well, is it just for the grant, or is it, is it to have them do the work? I mean, if they give us a grant, can't they ask somebody else to do the master plan?
Whoever, whoever is the staffer that they sent down here, is your consultant to do the master plan, and believe you me, that individual has a lot of influence on where you're going with your plan.
They gotta mention them.
Oh, yeah, that's why they're, 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 they're sweetening the palate to get you to go.
Yeah, they're gonna have their agenda coming into that door.
And June twenty-sixth is the deadline for the project, it's only a little too big, application, it's not a big deal. It's only a little too big, application, it's not a big deal to apply, but we need a decision tonight so I can get the app in by June twenty-sixth. Problem is, I hate to, to go for the, go for the grant, you hit the grant, I mean, deny it, I really make that decision before I apply. Because you know what happens if you apply for a grant, you get it and you turn it down, you get on a platform. And not just for them?
If I can possibly, I get the sense that maybe we should not apply for the grant, but maybe hold off and see what maybe else comes out. And then if it's a now and then, something else occurs, you give us the authorization, like, and says, if we say, we think we should apply for the grant, basically we do.
You could, and I'm also of the opinion that you worked very hard to save some money, you decide to spend that money for something as important as this, I don't have a problem with that.
Or unless you're dead set against it, at times, no.
I, I don't think we should get in on this, uh, CMAP.
Brian?
No, I don't think so.
John? Man, as much as I hate to say, I wouldn't want thirty grand from someone else, I, I don't know very well. I'm really torn on it. I am.
I haven't seen them.
Well, I was at Crete with you, with one petition about the last one at CMAP. I was down at three court findings with CMAP in Chicago. Nothing good comes of it, I'm against it. Just based on experience, John. But I agree, I don't wanna, I don't wanna see grant money walk away, but the risk is way high.
No, I mean, I'm the one who said it, you know, I mean, they, they're gonna come in here with an agenda, there's no doubt about it. They're gonna have their opinions and they're gonna want it, influence it.
The, the risk is way high and I've, I've gone their, their hearings and their offices in Chicago and whether you've got everything in your favor, unless you've got somebody on that board on your side, you're dead.
But your concern with this is basically we'll be changing our mind from day to day. I know you wanna try and say that Dexter's thirty thousand dollars, you know, that the same topic, maybe other costs and that's.
Yeah, that's, that's just.
Maybe between now and, like, we had this feeling that we, we, we just hung up and said, you know, uh, maybe something will change and we won't have to even think about it anyways.
It's our plan, it's not.
If they give us funding, how, I mean, are, are we talking about, is that a matter of having, uh, a headstrong PZC that is gonna sit there and say, I, I don't care what you say, this is what we want, this is what the village of Beecher needs. You can sit here and keep telling us this is what we need, this is what we need, we know what we need.
See, what they're gonna do, John, is they're gonna throw you an, a, a, an encyclopedia thick of proof why you should go that way and you have no other information other than we do not feel this is the right way to go. They're gonna, they'll, they'll kill you with paper. I mean, you saw it, Bob, when we were up there. It doesn't matter, and, and I agree, I don't wanna see thirty thousand walk away either. If it was a grant and we apply it to planning and zoning of this master plan, I'm all for it, but if it's coming with strings attached, especially from that group.
I mean, what, what, I mean, that's the other thing, 'cause I mean, what are the string, I mean, what we have here, this is what I'm looking at. This one paragraph, I mean, what are, what strings are attached with this grant? What comes along with it?
There basically isn't, they would provide you their staffers, they would facilitate the meetings, they would hold the informational workshops for the residents, they would do the maps, they would write up the text and just like a consultant would. The, the, the issue that concerns me is the consultant is very influential in the end result, the, the finished product. And you're right, if you have a very strong PZC that says, no, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, but I, I don't know.
Yes, if it wasn't for the experience that we had a few years back, well, we'd do that.
I'd probably do it. See, the problem is that we have, we have one bad experience, that was a bad experience, and that's what we're basing our opinion on, I think they're putting us to the board.
It, it put, it put a village right on our doorstep. And we went, we went down there with all documentation possible that was, would have shut down the other village and it didn't matter. It was a preconceived notion.
Look, Greg and I thought this was a point of decision, we have a discussion as to what we should do. Usually, this is a no-brainer, all it's applied for, you know, but this one is, it's a policy decision. It's fine. Yeah, and you know what, we could decide to go for it, it hasn't been a great process, and we're like, wow, why were we so concerned? But what if it went the other way? We started to get influenced by external forces.
And once you start, you can't stop, right, you can't just say you're fair, walk away.
No, grant hooks you in. And, and, and any, what do you want, I mean, like. Well, I know you just said, you, you get a counselor, a staffer, they come down, they conduct, do they have to conduct the meetings? Can we conduct our own?
Oh, no, we conduct the meetings, they become your paid consultant. Okay, what if, what if I tell them I pay consultant?
Sit there and shut your mouth, I don't wanna hear what you gotta say.
I don't think it's gonna work there.
It'll work there. If they're your paid consultant, you know what I mean, like, you could have somebody working for you.
Whether or not, stay over there and. Whether or not to tell you that violates a grant agreement or not, I don't know.
I, I don't, I don't think that's gonna happen. I, I think bottom line is, what we're saying is, is sure, if he's sitting there and say, no, we're not gonna do it this way, we want it done that way, the question is how well is he gonna do it, are we? You know what I mean? If, if his heart isn't in it, if you wanna call it that, or his knowledge isn't, or whatever you wanna call it, that, he wants to go this way, but we wanna go this way, how good of a job is he gonna do it? Because he wants to influence to go this.
He's gonna prove, he's gonna prove that your step was wrong.
Another problem we tried to get over is the fact that the CMAP does not formally recognize the Elian Expressway. They are on record as being opposed to the Elian Expressway, how good are they gonna be?
To plan for, support it.
And they're on record as being opposed to it, I, I, I don't know, you know?
Is the, um, how can I ask this without naming anybody? Are the mayor still involved in CMAP, that we're going to pass?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
That's what I thought.
One of the strongest ones on the board, you think he's walking away?
I know.
That's where, again, we, we can't experience.
Yes, he, he wields a higher influence over that board than anybody realized. And there's a, there's a possibility, we need to apply for the grant, get the grant, make sure we do the product, everyone's happy.
Not yet.
But there's also a possibility of me not doing the whole one.
And you got someone else's opinion to ram around on.
Yeah, and then that's why I'm very conflicted on these guys, I tell you, I hate to see them.
I agree, I, I hate to see them.
But at the same time, I'd like to meet somebody who's a pocket. I'm on the, hey, it's, I'm on the.
What's that deadline?
Twenty-sixth of the sixth.
I don't know if you're with, with trusted quarters, uh, asked, after, after the executive session, the committee appointment's gonna be discussed for, problem is that after the appointments.
Still on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, it's, you can go and bring it back, you're going back to open session anyway. You're doing that to make a motion, what I'm doing is directing me to their own revival consultation. No, if John would like somebody to discuss. Well, why don't you table a discussion later tonight? That's the same motion, okay, yeah. Do you need a motion reopened lately? I make a motion to table a discussion until I can be exact. Second.
Who wanted to go and jump ass and say, well, it's okay, 'cause I run out of gas.
It was a gale's day.
We're still lactating with their ginsminicuris.
Yes, they're good.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Seriously. What a difference a day makes. You're close.
Considering ordinance repealing, would you guys like to do this one?
No.
Considering ordinance repealing ordinance number ten sixty-one, approving March twenty-seven, two thousand seven for the creation of the Creekside subdivision. The developer agreement was approved by the board for the presentable property located on the south side of Church Road between Dixie and the railroad tracks with, uh, John Pop and the RJR development. Property was foreclosed on, the banks are involved in trying to sell the property. One of the potential purchasers wishes to make sure that if he buys a property, he's not bound to be putting in improvements for the residential subdivision since he only wants a farm land amount for it. If the development agreement is repealed, the land will remain our one zoning, but all the fees, flats, engineering, infrastructure requirements will be nullified. Once a property is proposed to be developed, new requirements will follow.
P I B, it's, it's inhibiting the sale of the property because the development agreement holds the land. Somebody just wants to buy a apartment for not to give us some credit, or just, uh, this development agreement gives that. We're currently in negotiation for, um, receiving engineering or new fees on that property, because we have a lien on the property. We'd like to get paid for something after negotiating that agreement. So, the agreement is nullified, I mean, it's ten years old, it, it doesn't, it's done, that's basic. Might as well give off some.
I can make a motion for ordinance number. Number ninety-one, repealing ordinance ten sixty-one, approved March forty-seven, two thousand seven for the creation of the Creekside subdivision.
Second.
Motion for, second, any questions?
Yeah, if, and if he does decide to go residential, whoever's buying the property, he then has to go right back through this again.
They're brief, I just don't.
Any other questions? Go on.
Aaron?
Yes.
Aaron, yes.
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 I have one thing I think would come under your committee, uh, something came up today, has come up in the past, and I think, uh, there is something that has to be addressed down the future and all I'm asking for is a consensus, it can't be voted on, it's not on the agenda. We had an issue come up today about fences, I'm sorry, it's fences, had to do with, uh, taking down a fence and staff correctly informed them what to do with the fence as far as taking it down, but what the general was gonna do, I think was gonna make the situation worse. And like the last planning and zoning, uh, request that was made by the resident, I think we really need to look at this further or discuss this further. So, all I'm asking for is if you would please agree to a, uh, I'll call it a moratorium on the taking down of any fences meeting, what the, uh, how to describe it.
Well, the, the problem, the issue is, somebody has a pool in their backyard with a solid fence. Then the property is sold, let's say a new family was having a small children. Well, they remove the pool and then the village says, well, wait, but you got a solid fence, you gotta take the solid fence down. Well, they don't know that, okay? Now they have to buy a fence on top of moving the pool. Question is, is the fence legally not a conformant use? Technically, uses are uses of property, not destructions, do you understand what I mean by that? So, is the fact that the fence being enclosed, is that legally not a conformant fence? That might be one way of solving that problem, you don't have to legal pick. The other thing is just saying. Hmm? A legal not conforming sign. Yeah, I mean, is, is, can a fence be legally not a conformant? Um, the, the other issue is, what Greg wants to address is, okay, you have a solid fence in your backyard and somebody removes the pool, can the fence remain? You can put language in the ordinance to that, right? The other thing is, can we just allow a solid fence?
Before we get, before we get into a lot of detailed discussion, the intent is not to fully address it because first, or maybe we should, we might go to the planning and zoning and discuss this. It needs to be formally set to the planning and zoning if we want it to be addressed. But the problem is, is that, um, again, what I, what I saw today was, or, and I don't remember if you put this emphasis on there in the beginning of your discussion, is I buy a home to add a fence and a pool, but I don't want the pool. Okay, so I tear down the pool, we're gonna make the person tear down the fence, and I just bought the house. That's, that's one example, I know that's, that's the one you used. When I went out and looked at two different fences that actually, uh, hinged on a pool, the one fence that I saw was totally different to this other solid fence, but yet this one was gonna have to be torn down and this was actually the better looking fence, which to me had actual spaces in between it, but yet we were gonna make it, tear it down. And then he was gonna modify it, which, an, an extreme example that Bob said was that that person could literally take the saber saw, cut big holes in the fence and make it look like, you know what, and bottom line is, he would conform the ordinance, but we would have something worse that won't be stirred up. So, I think that needs to be addressed and the fact that I think the key thing that was brought out in that one planning and zoning, uh, issue was the fact that should a fence hinge solely on a pool, nowadays, I think privacy is, is much broader and people expect privacy in a different way, not just because of the pool, but also other ways. So, what I'm getting at is, rather than shooting from the hip saying, no, this is the way you gotta do it because it does, we did it that way for a year, I'd just like to slow down a minute. Bottom line, let's go back, let's look at the overall picture and if there's something that needs to be done, set up the planning and zoning with some guidance and maybe some guidance can happen at this one meeting that we're coming up.
Let me just say one thing, though, and, yeah, we're not gonna solve the security fences, it's a nightmare, it's like War Three. But, yes, they would need to take it down, that's one of the requirements, and when the pool goes up, if somebody moves in and takes that pool down, so goes the fence. We just went through, right around the election, allowing somebody to put up a solid fence, the understanding, within a year, he's gonna be putting a pool up. And it was a, and it was, it was a requirement of that fence, that the fence goes up, in a year, he's gotta put that pool in. If he doesn't, we're gonna make him take it down. That's what was in that agreement from planning and zoning, it's a requirement of that. And that's what is in the village ordinance is right now, that if you remove that fence or that pool, the fence goes with it. I mean, that's what's in there right now.
Right.
So, yeah, you would have to have them take it down.
Right, we, yes, but we're looking to say, hold off on that a minute because we need to take another look at it, that's all we're saying. And, and again, let's, let's, the example is, is I buy the house, and again, use that example again, there's a pool there, but I don't want the pool, so I take it down, and now I gotta take the fence down. I didn't cause it to begin with, so I think that should be considered.
But.
And again, also in this one case of where this one house is, is, is gonna be required to be done with fence. Again, I realize aesthetic or beauties and the eye of the beholder, whatever you wanna call it, I think the fence looks much better than a light colored fence.
The only thing is, is when you use that scenario as far as buying a property and not knowing, the owner, the current owner knows. And there's disclosures that they have to fill out that say that, you know what, if you take this pool down, you're gonna have to remove this fence. Except, except if the buyer goes in and doesn't express that opinion until after the fact, then disclosure is no longer required because I can't disclose something I didn't know you were gonna do. Right now, it stands, the, the property is fully code compliant, and if after the sale, you decide to take that pool out, it's not disclosure requirement because now you are now the owner of the property, I've not hidden this from you, and it's a village ordinance. I mean, it's buyer beware, but I agree, if the person says, well, that pool's going, I move in, yes, disclosure does take precedence. But if you go into that sale and never express that opinion, disclosure doesn't come into play.
Let's see, there's a, a disclosure question on seller disclosure that states that if there's any municipal codes or anything like that that is out of the ordinary, but it needs to be disclosed.
That's a disclosure on the person.
Huh?
That's assuming that the person does disclose it and has asked them to disclose it out.
Right.
And also, a new buyer coming in, you know, they ask about fences, I mean, that's one of the big questions, you know, go down and talk to the village. If they come down and talk to the village, the village would say, you know what, this is a special situation, it has a pool, it has a solid fence because of the pool. If that pool comes down, I, I just think it's, I don't know, I don't know how you can change the ordinance now.
Anything can change.
You can change anything, but it's inconsistent.
When, when, number one, we, yeah, we have to be consistent, we have to be fair to what, what's happened across the board. But the problem is, is when this was, when this ordinance was drafted, how many years ago, things have changed and progressively changed all along and things are looked at differently. And now, it used to be before, at least unless someone was doing it longer, I have, tell me, is years ago, if privacy was hinged on a pool, privacy is no longer hinged on a pool, it's hinged amongst other things, it's hinged on, I have bad neighbors, I, it's hinged on a dog, it's hinged on, uh, I just don't like anybody looking at me with a bad character. It's no, I, I think hinging it on a pool is where we're making a mistake. You can leave the, the fence ordinance the way it is right now, just take out the word pool, put it, and I realize I've always said this is simple, but it's never been simple. Take out the, the hinge on the pool, just put in wording saying that you should tell us what your hardship is. That's probably be the easiest thing, and you don't have to make it take it down, they can come in, they can claim, I have bad neighbors, I have ugly neighbors for lack of better terms, you know, or, or whatever the case may be.
But if, if that's the case, you could say that all the time, you're better off. If, if, if the idea is to, is to loosen the strength of the pool of the fence ordinance and remove all stipulations, just indicate what kind of fences are allowed inside the village. then remove all stipulations, just indicate what kind of fences are allowed inside the village. They not have any stipulation, but to say, name your hardship, well, my best friend lives next door, but I want a solid fence, I don't like that guy. Well, it, I mean, you're, you're, to, to do that, doesn't make sense to say that's the hardship.
There's like four or five different options that we could do, and that's why, again, we're not gonna solve it tonight, we can't take a vote on it tonight. One of which, you can go to the other extreme, is, as we brought it up last time, when, when we had, before this, that Peatone just went through this, changed their whole fence ordinance because of the very thing that we're talking about. And we can simply look at that, we can go through the whole thing, or we can make it as easy in my mind as we wanna make it, or we can go back from, we can, we can change it. All we're looking forward to tonight is at least a consensus that we can tell staff, rather than just us doing it, the entire board would just simply say, stop what you're doing, let's go in, let's discuss it, let's go on.
Before this guy does something harsh, and, and, because I, I know. I don't know, you could, you, you could cut the circles because there's, there's spacing requirements, so that doesn't fit the requirements for open. You can't just cut holes because there's slot spacing requirements.
What if he went in, and this is, this is something I've heard this guy say, I'll, I'll take out every other picket before I take down this whole fence.
He's legal if he does, he can do that.
And how nice will that look? This fence has four, was it, like, probably four or five inch slats? And all of a sudden, you, you got a fence that has a nice bar across, it's scalloped at the top with, like, little light things, uh, solar light caps on it and all that? And all of a sudden, the scallop is gone because every other picket is gone, to where he may even get angrier and take out three of them in a row, and then leave one, take out two in a row, leave two, take out ones. Oh, yeah, that'd be a real beauty.
But it does give you minimum separations in the ordinance.
Hang on, hang on, like I said, it's not on the agenda, can't vote.
Yeah.
Keep emphasizing that.
We're not voting on it.
All I'm looking for, rather than get into a full-blown discussion, because I wasn't fully prepared, because I had intentions of showing you in pictures or telling you to go by these addresses and look at these two fences, and here's exactly what we're talking about. Okay? We didn't do that tonight, because all I'm looking for is before anybody makes a drastic mistake, before we make a drastic mistake, just handle moratorium temporarily on these type of requests.
You know, we talk about fences at least once a year. At least two, three, once a month, you know?
What I'm trying to do is make it easier for us, put it to bed, fix something, hopefully we can fix, we'll probably break again, but we'll try.
They'll fix it.
Yeah, I don't think.
It'll never, it'll never.
It'll never.
One, one of the ideas is, another idea to throw out there, is Peatone took their fences, took my zoning ordinance, made it part of the municipal code. So, they have strict rules on fences now. In my variance, you don't pay seven hundred and fifty dollars, you come to the village board meeting, and you make your request in the board, the board will say, fine, we're gonna notify all your neighbors, and we'll discuss it at the next meeting, and we will decide. That's how Peatone decided to do it. Okay? Now, that's gonna add to your agenda, but it takes that lengthy, hard, twenty-day process out with the seven hundred and fifty dollar fee, because you're doing it internally, the board's making those decisions. Now, the problem with that is, those decisions could become political. Well, we just want it granted for it, because, well, you know, nice guy.
That's what we had before we, we installed this seven hundred and fifty dollar thing. That's, we had that every week, everybody was coming to the board meeting.
Yeah, it is true.
So, why, that's what we're trying to eliminate.
Yeah, and what about the covenants and restrictions on some, some areas?
Those, those, those covenants take precedence.
They're still fine, I'm not talking about that, I'm just talking about what we basically deal with.
It's got the covenants of those subdivisions. This board and planning and zoning can't change. They have to comply with those, it's their own, their own group has to, has to go through those. It's, it's written against the properties, it's, it's just what it is. But the village cannot, cannot officially use those as power. It's what they've gotta do in their own group.
So, the village ordinance is not.
They can supersede the ordinance, they can strengthen it, but they cannot supersede it.
You started for a guessing.
I, I, I just want, oh, I, Greg, basically what you're looking for is, I wanna make sure I understand this, that this guy has been given a date as to when to take this out.
We're gonna block them.
You're looking for us, just put a hold on this, let's get a P Z C board in place.
Let's.
Let it go through the proper channels. P Z C, where there may be some possibilities, you're gonna be possibly instructing P Z C to look further into this fence ordinance, as far as if there could be grandfather clauses, if there's, uh, you know, changing ownership or something like that. In the meantime, you're just looking for, right now, uh, to, let's just put a hold on before we're making people tear out fences and stuff like that where it may not be necessary.
That is correct, okay, I, I am definitely for that.
And we might get a legal opinion staying, say that attorney could make a legal opinion if these are legally not conforming fences that take steer the prop.
That the residents literally had to sell out tonight, today. And then I received a phone call saying, do you really want this guy using, uh, liquid nails to glue his fence back together again? And I said, hold on, made the call, might know what happened at the village hall. And it just so happened that there was a discussion earlier today on the very subject, so I don't know, whatever happened.
The thing is, the, the village doesn't dictate how you build a fence, and yes, someone can buy a scalloped fence and put the parts in, the village just gives you minimum separation for an opening in the fence. That's what's in there. You can do it all liquid nails for all it care, as long as it's in the ground and in compliance. That whole building in the ground is in compliance by the, your billing department. Other than that. Other than that, they're not gonna get involved with how you construct the fence.
But what you said is part of the problem, and again, until I get the pictures to you to show you the whole picture, you know what I'm talking about, this fence that wants to come down, literally actually has gaps between the slats. Very close nearby, there is a fence that has no gaps in it whatsoever. That's what I'm saying, is that this resident is going to take down a fence that, in my mind, is much more attractive than another fence, and we're gonna make this guy take it down. He's gonna make it worse than what it was. I think we're making a mistake there.
Yeah, he's, this, this guy is angry. This guy is gonna, it's a corner lot in a subdivision, we have to think about the neighbors. This guy is gonna make it undesirable. He is gonna, to prove a point, this guy is so angry, he is gonna butcher this fence and leave it up, give it to what he's gotta do conforming, and he's not gonna do it in a pretty way. And the neighbors are gonna be the ones to suffer. The neighbors that have to look at this are gonna be the ones to suffer.
But you do realize that any, any resident that wants to put a fence in.
I understand all that, Greg, this is where we're at.
Can, can butcher a fence on the original installation and still be in compliance with, with or without an ordinance?
I understand that. This is the situation that we're at, here is where we are at with this. And because of that, I am with Greg, I say, we put a hold on this, let's let P Z C look at this, talk to it, let's just get the saw out of the guy's hands before he does something drastic that all the neighbors are gonna have to pay for.
Okay, we may end up back at the same org, just that right now, before anybody makes a mistake, I just said, slow down, let's see if we can get a consensus to put a moratorium on it, and talk about this for a little while. That's all I'm asking.
If, if it's a fence.
I don't know, I, I don't believe in, in, you know, changing policies for one situation. I mean, this comes up all the time. What's for the overall good of the community? I mean, what?
I truly think this would be for the overall community. It's just like an ordinance that we, we had on the books for the longest time, and bottom line is, we realize some day it, it's, it's wrong, it doesn't fit the needs, it, it's, you know, irrelevant.
So, it's in an area that does not have covenants and restrictions?
It, there is covenants and restrictions. What this guy is talking about doing, it's still gonna be covenants and restrictions. It's in Hunter's Chase, there's no hiding it. It's in Hunter's Chase, it's on a corner of a major road through Hunter's Chase that everyone's gonna have to look at. And one of the big things with the fence ordinances is we don't want it looking like garbage and everything else. And despite the village, that's what this guy is gonna do. And like I said, the neighbors are gonna be the ones that have to pay for it. The neighbors are gonna be the ones that have to look at this thing. And, and I, I don't wanna see it happen to, to the residents. I don't wanna see it happen to the dozens of residents that surround this guy's house that are gonna have to look at this every day.
I love this.
But he's gonna live there too.
Yeah, he does, but I'm saying, people do a lot of things out of spite, you know what I mean? They get angry, and they do things out of spite.
So, all the rules are wasted.
Okay, well, it's the intent to get into discussion, but I'm sorry, we did. I love this, I'm asking for thirty days, within that thirty days, we'll get you to the addresses, we'll get you the pictures, we'll get the arguments, whatever the case may be, so you'll be fully addressed, you can look at it yourself, and then at the next meeting, then I'll ask if you wanna place a formal moratorium on it. How do you go with that? Thirty days, next meeting, that's all I'm asking for.
Then fight.
All right. Okay. Uh, the Eliana Expressway. Uh, it just so happened I was invited to a Joliet Chamber of Commerce, where this topic came up, Commerce meeting. Uh, this topic and the airport came up. They're hoping to be shovel-ready in spring of twenty fifteen, coming up on June seventeenth in Indiana at the Lowell Middle School, five to eight, is a public meeting on Tier Two. And June eighteenth at the Peatone High School, there's a public meeting, uh, five to eight P M. There really isn't anything new, except it is moving very rapidly. Uh, and once again, that particular day, they'll be listening to the landlords and the property owners, and so on and so forth. Uh, South Suburban Airport, don't know where to start on this one. On the very day that the surrounding mayors of, of the airport communities, uh, were going to meet, a bill suddenly came out of nowhere and basically ended up passing the House, as we probably all know. The summarization of that bill and the entire conversation pretty much is in the newspaper article that I put before you. Basically, uh, the I D O T is going to run the airport. There's a clause, or a section in that particular building that's passed. Uh, I don't know if you're excited, or is it that far in?
It will be soon.
Yeah. There's a clause in there that they have to consult with, uh, communities on running of the airport or the economics of the airport, or I don't know exactly what I read. Uh, at this Joliet meeting, I happened to run into, like, we, one of the sponsors of the bill, which is Larry Wallace, Jr., uh, as well as Ann Schneider, the director of I D O T, was there. And I confronted them, and I said, well, what do you mean by, uh, the surrounding communities? I says, I have a concern of communities that are way up north, and is that what you mean, whatever? And they assured us that, or they assured me that basically they're only talking about the five communities surrounding the airport. In, in the bill itself, it was modified to read communities affected by the airport, which even that's a little broader. But once again, they emphasized that the, uh, what they mean is basically the surrounding communities of the airport. They are planning now, or I could see in this particular meeting, where they, they are beginning to maybe take the route that the Eliana Expressway did as far as consulting, moving it along and so on and so forth. As a private-public venture of E three, they are planning on one-on-one meetings with the communities affected to sit down and address our concerns. Uh, if, if anything, it seems to have taken a little different direction. Possibly maybe in a more positive direction to get our input, even though none of the communities had any idea that this would be, this bill was being brought before the legislatures. Uh, even though it's been going for the last four months, we had no clue it was even coming. And being the new man on the block and that particular group sitting there, you could just see the disappointment in the entire group, and all the work that they've done over the years, and basically they did nothing on this bill. All said and done, I think we're all in agreement that it's not really a bad bill, we're gonna try and work with it and move on from there. Uh, some other information that was given to me at the Joliet meeting was, there's roughly a hundred and fifty-two to a hundred and fifty-nine parcels that have been obtained, there's seventy-two parcels left. Out of those seventy-two parcels, that's my understanding that a map had to be registered with the Secretary of State, identifying those parcels, part of the parcels as quit-take parcels. Uh, so they had to tell which parcel, there may be a possibility of them quit-taking it. And something I learned in case you didn't know, if in fact, the state's own, why, and the, the property owner cannot agree at a price for their land, will this quit-take option, they are entitled to a jury trial. And the jury then will decide how much they get for their property. Just something that I learned recently.
No, but, boy, I'll tell you, how quickly things can change.
And it's one of the mayors that I mentioned, you know, talking about, potentially elected mayor, you're just gonna write into the fire, because there's gonna be a lot of work in the next four years. Uh, the Intergovernmental Meeting, which is now scheduled for August twenty-ninth at seven P M. The question is, what, what, or who do you want on that agenda, who do you want to attend that meeting? Uh, I have heard this several times before, and I'd just like to point out to you, the Aaron Quick from the Fire and Worth group gave a twenty-minute presentation on the history of the airport and how it came about. Um, I've heard, I think, from the individuals that have attended this presentation, it's very worthwhile. And so the question becomes, would you be willing to have him at this particular meeting? Do you other want the Eliana reps there, or the South Suburban Airport reps there, or anything else that you wanna discuss at this meeting? I think we would suggest at the very least Aaron Quick would be happy to have him.
And probably the Eliana people, Steve Shelkey. I don't know if I'm in shape.
I am.
Let's do Aaron instead, although she's gonna run the airport. Yeah, you planning another interregional also?
I believe so. Question, is it?
A winner of Intergovernmental also? Really, nothing but daily hour, but, uh, airport is really scheduled until early twenty fourteen. Is there really time to do one, discuss this one?
I was just thinking, you know, why, any dude, us were more the same one, not much has really changed. We've, we've gotten that bill passed and stuff like that, we're still waiting for, for the airport, there's the FAA decision, which isn't coming till early twenty fourteen.
You need to skip either one, but you're Aaron Quick's thing.
Yeah, I mean, the airport, I'm just thinking this.
You're a newly elected official, and you hear the term "town that", or you hear the term "will town the airport", Aaron can tie all of it together in twenty minutes and explain you the, the history from the inception of the airport to today. Then even for us veterans, we forgot, I heard, oh, I didn't know that. It was amazing how much history there is in the airport. And it might be good if we even tell advice to, to at least have portion of the meeting put that on the table, that people need to be refreshed on where we are today and how we're down.
Anybody else have any suggestions? About if we do the airport thing, if it's available?
We can pull off, talk, and pull off everything else.
All right, is everybody's? Strategic planning process, Bob might share that.
Uh, back in two thousand nine, uh, we did a strategic planning process, we did it in-house, it didn't cost us anything in that time. Issues in the community. Now, a lot of those issues are the same, some have changed, some have modified. But the process began with a survey of each trustee that was anonymous, so you fill out your survey and hand it in to the law anonymous. Then I compiled the results of that survey and put all the comments in, in the proper order, and then that becomes the focus of our discussion. Now, in all fairness to John and to the new trustee, that we're gonna have at some point in the future, they have not been involved with that process. And you as mayor have not been involved from those presidents' point of view in the process. I think it's time to do it again. Um, we become part of the land use planning process, because we will know strategically where you think you are. Talk about downtown, we'll talk about, um, sewer plant expansion, those kinds of things, that's all we know. I don't know if you recall, we did it back in the line, we talked about how many police cars we should have, we talked about, we need a new fireworks garage, and that's how the new fireworks garage came about for a new police station, a new village hall. Those kind of decisions came out of that process. And I think it's worthwhile, it's been four years, so I think we should, we have, actually, it's four years.
Thoughts? I'm thinking that maybe if we do this, then we'd have a ration. Uh, if I don't remember, we did, should be giving that to the planning and zoning, if they really help them, some of the questions out there, we'll guide them through the planning process.
Yep.
Thank you, everybody's agreed.
Now, if I get my act together, you're gonna get your survey before the next board meeting. There'll be directions, and they're filled out, and we bring it back to the village hall and others. You know, in fact, I'll talk to you, that, you can give it to them online, you can type it back somehow in PDF, but there's no, you don't comprehend it.
I don't have an email address.
We could send it in Word format.
How do we do the, um, survey online?
Survey Monkey?
We do a survey monkey, where, 'cause it'd have room for us to do additional text, right? Where it's just us, and then, 'cause you can't tell who sends it in, correct?
No.
I'm sorry, do you wanna create a form, do you have a, any more questions?
Well, the other thing is, if, if you have the form, if Gina has the form in a Word, she can send it, we can fill it out, print it out, and give it in. They, there's no handwriting. Same thing as survey.
First of all, do you care, the only one that's gonna see them is me.
No, I, I mean, I'm one that's.
There's no way I'm on.
Yeah.
And I'm not gonna tell somebody, oh, I know this, they all showed up this year. No, you're gonna get all the results compiled under the same question. You can probably guess who said what, but that's your own business.
Yeah.
That's the old-fashioned way, instead of getting a survey monkey, then I won't go, and this party didn't.
Instead of getting a survey monkey, then I will go to this project. That, that sounds good.
All right.
There'll be a fall project, this will be a fall.
All right, do you, we think we've got it figured out without using any of what we need ourselves? You can create a form that you can type into and save it, something.
Yeah, and decide if you wanna do it by hand. Well, honestly, Jeanette, if you do, if you, if you have it in a Word file, send it. Just send it, we can always run it out either hand write, or whatever.
I would prefer to type written comments than type one faster.
Unless you can read it even to.
All right, in all offense, I'll tell you, we'll figure it out.
Put some on finish.
Yeah. Okay, please do.
All right, consider a membership of the South Suburban Mayors and Managers Association. Once again, if you refer to that newspaper article, there's a section down at the bottom left, which is one of the reasons why I think it's important that we do so, as well as the Route 1 corridor. Basically, while we were in Springfield, uh, on lobby day, we were, uh, talking to different individuals. While we found out after the fact that the mayors that is referred to in the article actually consisted of the South Suburban Mayors and Managers, of which, uh, one of the towns amongst us, at the very least, was a member of, and that's the only reason why we found out about this meeting after the fact. It's like the, uh, the caption here illustrates, I think, make the wire store shorts, I think we're missing the boat. I think we should be represented by the Mayors and Managers Association. They're an excellent group, we've had history with them in the years in the past. And I think if we don't, especially with the Eliana Expressway and the airport, I think we're gonna be missing something in the future. And especially since they wanna do the Route 1 corridor, 23rd town. Uh, we are estimating that the cost would be about $3,000. Uh, we have to give them some information after meeting tonight, and they will come back with the cost. Uh, and then we can go from there.
All members.
Everybody out here, that's, that's the one issue that I, and actually I talked to Ed Paisel, or we talked to Ed Paisel that day. It's Moni, Crete, us, Frankfurt, Okeechobee and Olenek's.
Tidley Park.
Tidley Park. Uh, there are Wool County towns that are in it, that's number one.
University Park.
I did ask that, the majority of their membership, I think it's safe to say, is north. But they do have some membership out south, but they do have a lot of influence of what happens out this way.
They may have a new president due next year.
Uh, yeah. Uh, the three mayors, the president, they're on.
I think any sort of networking that you can do, Brad, as far as, with that with other towns, especially with all this stuff coming out, I think it's a positive thing.
I heard the main reason we didn't join that group is because they were pro-airport, they're pushing the airport, remember? We were in there, but the issue with the airport is gone. I mean, the governance model's been adopted, the state's pushing. And we don't have the common enemy in it.
Yeah. Um, I think we partner.
And again, I, it's not like a straighter tool, we either have a straighter tool, um, you know, in vital needs. Um, have you figured out where this is gonna come from?
Too early in the year yet.
Okay.
I'd probably charge it to the legal fees for now.
Okay. And do we need a motion for this?
So moved.
Good question on the fourth, joining the South Suburban Mayors and Managers, correct?
Correct.
Second. Motion for the fourth, and second, any questions? Go ahead.
Maylin?
Yes.
Stolen?
Yes.
The first?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Clear?
Yes.
Thank you. I think at this particular point in time, I'd ask for an executive session, uh, to discuss negotiation from the district's office, Senate, honorable, treaty, is the police department review executive session minutes from the past, for at least, uh, the department head employee contracts and the village president appointments. Afterwards, we will come back and we will possibly take, we'll take action, we'll be taking.
So moved.
Second. The motion made, second, all in favor? I'm sorry.
Hey, dude, you can't honor those, we don't do that down here.
That's clear.
That's true.
Yes, clear.
Yeah. Yes.
This is in Chicago, can we hit it twice? Not on the stage.
Oh, they're gonna, they're gonna say, they're gonna talk, but he's gonna stand outside with me.